Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, November 6, 2017 City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Menace?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderman Condon?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Schaper?
Here.
Alderman Lab?
Here.
Alderman Sandy?
Here. Please stand for the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is oath of office of Police Chief John Burke. I am here to present the oath of office as Chairman of the Police Commission, Rick Hubert.
Front and center. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you indulge me for a second, Commissioner Roberts could not be in attendance with us tonight, so I'm just going to read a brief message to John from Commissioner Mike Roberts. "I regret not being able to attend the swearing-in of John Burke, our city's new police chief. I've gotten to know John over the last decade and find him to be an extremely intelligent leader with impeccable integrity. Congratulations, Chief of Police John Burke." Just let me say that I've never seen City Council so packed in my life. I think it's a testament to John and how much pride that we have in his accomplishments as a police officer. I know that there's friends and family here this evening. Former Mayor Sue Lau, former Police Chief John Burke, John Jones, John Burke's predecessor. And I'm so honored and privileged. I don't know if anybody knows this in the room, but I met John in 1992. We started at McHenry Savings Bank together, so it's been a long ride. Even one of your past supervisors is in the audience this evening. So, without further ado, I think John would like to make a few remarks.
I just have a few words I wanted to say before we started. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to recognize my family, my grandmother, and my parents, John and Sharon, my sister Amy who's back there with her three kids, Jared, Brooklyn, and Tanner, my little girl, Tegan, and my wife, Adriana. I wouldn't be here without her. I'd also like to recognize everyone else who came out tonight. This is very, very humbling to see that I had such a big turnout, for myself and for Deputy Chief Walsh. Finally, I couldn't be more humbled by the support of the fellow officers and employees of the McHenry Police Department who are here. I'd like to thank Mayor Jeff, I'd like to thank City Administrator Moorefield, and the City Council for your support. I recognize that taking on this new role comes with big shoes to fill. Thank you, Chief Jones, for that. As I start this new chapter, I pledge every day to fulfill my duties with the same integrity and tenacity that should be expected of this position. Thank you again, everyone, for being here. Before I move on and I get my swearing-in, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Deputy Chief, or the new, soon-to-be Deputy Chief Walsh. For those of you that do or don't know Tom, Tom made McHenry his home 23 years ago, and since then, he has spent the last 21 years serving the city of McHenry and its residents. Having the honor to promote Tom tonight will be one of my most memorable highlights of my career. Tom, it's hard to believe that after just 18 years ago, I was riding in your squad car as your trainee, and you were helping me take my first steps in public service. I look forward to the great accomplishments I know you will obtain with this new position, and I could tell plenty of amazing stories about Tom. But I know the City Council has a full agenda today. And I know Tom doesn't really like the attention. Let me close by saying that working alongside the men and women of the McHenry Police Department for a purpose greater than any one person is and will continue to be the most fulfilling aspect of my life.
Make it official?
We should.
I, John R. Burke?
I, John R. Burke.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the City of McHenry?
And the ordinances of the City of McHenry.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Chief of Police?
The duties of Chief of Police.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Chief Burke.
Now, don't stick me, okay? You got this. I think we almost got it. Push. There you go. Good job. Tom, it's your turn. I don't have any remarks. I can do an original song, you know.
It's the first time I've heard a quiet Irishman. Again, if you indulge me one second, just some prepared statement from Commissioner Mike Roberts. "I regret not being able to attend tonight's meeting in which Commander Tom Walsh is to be sworn in as Deputy Chief. Tom is a wonderful selection, in my opinion, the only selection. I've witnessed Tom's professionalism and character over the years and see nothing but the finest. Congratulations, Deputy Chief Tom Walsh." I concur.
Thanks, Rick.
Are we ready?
Sure.
Let's do this. "I, Thomas M. Walsh?"
"I, Thomas M. Walsh."
"Do solemnly swear?"
"Do solemnly swear."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the State of Illinois?"
"The Constitution of the State of Illinois."
"And the ordinances of the City of McHenry."
"And the ordinances of the City of McHenry."
"And that I will faithfully discharge?"
"And I will faithfully discharge."
"The duties of Deputy Chief?"
"The duties of Deputy Chief."
"To the best of my ability."
"To the best of my ability."
"Congratulations, Deputy Chief."
You might be at more risk than I was.
Chief Burke and Deputy Chief Walsh, I look forward, along with staff and council, to work with both of you. Great individuals, and I look forward to what the Police Department has in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The city is providing a cake and coffee reception in the atrium to your left at this time. All in attendance here this evening is invited, so at this time you may exit. I'm sure you all would like...
You can stay.
You can stay! Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Character Council Award. The six pillars of character are trust, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. This 13-year-old started this organization called Home Run Helpers, which is a group of area kids who have one mission, to make the community a better place and giving hope for others. I am honored on behalf of Character Council to be presenting this award to Kayden Ringer. Ellen from District 15, are you here this evening? Perfect, so you can actually give this award with me, so. Kayden, if you could come on up? Ellen, if you could say a few words about Kayden here, from District 15, that'd be great.
Yeah, so, my name's Ellen Sanguendorf, and I'm one of the social workers over at Parkland Middle School. I first met Kayden about this time last year, and he came to me saying that he wanted to help specifically one of his friends, who he noticed never had enough money really for field trips or to join in things like that that the other kids could. So, he and his mom decided to go and provide a Thanksgiving dinner for everyone in McHenry. They opened it up to everyone in McHenry, and it was over at the depot. And so they actually got to provide a really wonderful Thanksgiving dinner. And that's when kind of this Home Run Helpers took off. He also, because at Parkland, we raise money for Toys for Tots, but for Toys for Tots, the age limit is 12-years-old. And when Kayden found this out, he jumped on it, and they raised so much money, and they were able to get the kids between that 12 and 14 age range, who wouldn't have gotten gifts otherwise through Toys for Tots. They were able to get them gifts for Christmas last year. So, in addition to that, Kayden also, just one last little story. Kayden came into my office one day, and I'll never forget this, and he noticed I had all this food, like, on my shelves, which is kind of weird for a social worker, but he's just like, "What is that for?" And I'm like, "Well, you know, I send it home to a lot of students. I try to collect what I can, so people have enough to eat." And then, a couple weeks later, all of a sudden, right in the morning, Kayden came right in with a bunch of his buddies, holding all of these bags of food that he had collected to give away to the students at Parkland. So, those are just some of the ways that Kayden has been, super awesome and giving, and been great.
What I'd like to do on behalf of Council, elected officials, and staff, I'll donate $500 towards your organization, personally, not tax money. Keep up the good work. Moving on with tonight's agenda is Item 7 for Fiscal Year 2016-17 Annual Financial Report conducted by Edward Casella Company. Kevin Smith, please come up to the podium for your presentation.
Hi, thanks for having me. Just wanted to quick, present to you guys the audit for this year, how everything went. I'm just going to give you a quick overview. As usual, things have gone in the past. Audit went really well, as have Carolyn and Derek Bull. Provided for everything they need, everybody else in the finance departments are very responsive. Gives us all the answers we need and everything that we need to be in compliance. As in past years, no management letter. Basically, during our testing of select accounts and various processes, we didn't find anything that we felt needed, necessary, needed to be communicated in an actual management letter to the board. There are, you know, smaller things that we go over here and there, things to improve, but nothing that's significant that needs to be communicated. Also, just so you guys know, I know this year again, the actual report itself was a little later, and the presentations a little later, which is due to the GASB 68 reporting. There's a report that's done for the police pension that really can't be done until the IDI report is basically done itself. So, we went over that, different ways we could possibly speed that process up, because it did something that is prepared outside of our offices, and we had to wait for this report. So, we're going to work with Carolyn this year to possibly get, there's a schedule that needs to go to them, done in advance, to basically speed up that process so we can get things out a little earlier. As far as the audit itself, the report itself is pretty similar to past years. There are a couple new GASBs that were in there this year. There's GASB 72 and GASB 77. GASB 72, footnote itself is on Page 30. It has to do with fair value measurements of the investments that are held by the district. Essentially, there's three different levels of how fair value is measured. Level 1 is essentially traded on the market on a daily basis. There's an active market out there for, where you're easily able to go and find what that value is. Level 2 is basically there's less movement, things that are held for extended periods of time. There's a market forum, but it's a pretty slow-moving market. And Level 3 is essentially something that you hold that nobody else has. There's not really a market out there for, there's nothing to compare it to, so you're kind of valuing the value of it on your own. Basically, your guys' investments are all investments that are held with an investment advisor, and a lot of these investment firms are actually moving to provide us with sheets that actually list out what each investment is leveled at. Basically, what we did this year is we've gotten a group from various investment firms, whether or not things such as treasure securities, bonds, and things like that, what level they should be at, and that's where we came up with the footnote for this year. GASB 77, then, is a little further on through the audit report, is the tax abatement agreements. This basically was a new GASB that requires any tax, significant tax abatement agreements to be disclosed in the audit report. Just kind of lists out what taxes were drawn on for various agreements. This was something new this year, and you'll see, it's about a half-page footnote this year. Then, from a financial perspective, governmental fund balances ended in about $13 million this year, which is about six months of expenses for the year. So, all funds that you guys do have a minimum fund balance policy for, all met that policy. You guys were in good standing there. As far as the six months, it's in a good range. We normally like to see it somewhere between six months and two years. Six months, you still have some flexibility, two years, once you start getting to that area, you can see some possible property tax objections, so. Anytime you get anywhere near that, we usually discuss it, just to make sure that you guys have a plan for what that balance is there for. Then, as far as the water sewer fund, which is proprietary fund, you guys are sitting at about four months makes sense. So, it's a little over there, but also you guys have a little more control over where the revenue comes from as far as buildings. Then, just an FYI, so you guys know, the controller's report was finished up today, filed. A lot of these went on extension, just because the controller didn't make the actual system available until very late in October, so there was a mad rush to get a lot of these things done. So, a lot of the ones in our office got extended, just to, you know, give us time to get everything done and get everything done correctly, so. So, that was filed today. Also, your federal reporting requirements related to the IEPA loan, those are all finished and filed. Everything good with that, so. Other than that, those are the main things I wanted to go over, so just wanted to leave it open to you guys, if you got any questions on anything in particular.
Any questions from Council? None? Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment portion. This is an opportunity to give a comment for items that are on the consent agenda or items not on the action items individually. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? If you please come up to the podium and state your name and your address for public record.
I have my assistant here.
I'm Vanna.
Hello, I'm Greg Glover. I'm with the McHenry County Bicycle Advocates. We're a non-for-profit, in case you didn't know, encouraging awareness of alternative transportation, infrastructure, off-road, on-road, safety education. So, I'm here tonight to speak to one of your consent agenda items on the shared path proposal on Bow Valley Road, and just to give you the community input that we've gathered so far on the project. So, actually, well, in case you don't know where the said path would go on Bow Valley Road, it's between the existing prairie path that goes along metric tracks and 31. So, of course, the new sidewalk on Charles Meller Road that then connects all the way to Murray Hill State Park, that creates a single pathway. So, the first thing I wanted to bring your attention to, we started to distribute a petition this summer. I spent many hours actually out on the prairie path at the intersection on Bow Valley Road, and Dr. Bob didn't run me over, oh, I guess he left, collecting signatures. And actually, since then, it's sort of snowballed. We've got members of the McHenry County Bike Club here tonight, many others have at bike shops here locally, Bike Haven, Epic, we're collecting these. We actually have over 1,000 signatures. So, it's pretty overwhelming, the community interest. One of the interesting things, besides many people in the city of McHenry, there are many people in the county, and actually outside of the county, that provided signatures. And this wasn't a Facebook blast, you know, we didn't just go out and say, "Anybody online can do this." These were all gathered locally. So, it shows you the interest that external people, even outside of McHenry, and, you know, Crystal Lake and all that, there's almost every community in the county was represented here, as well as many cities in northeast Illinois. I was amazed by that. So, clearly, there's a huge demand in terms of wanting the trail. Okay, so, people can want a lot of things, is there a need? And of course, that's where your capital dollars that you may choose to spend on this comes into play. I see it as three major reasons that this path is warranted. The first, most obvious, would be health and recreation. I mean, that's pretty much of a no-brainer. But it's a good thing, you're getting people out on the path, whether it's cycling, walking, et cetera, right? Number two is safety. A lot of people go on Bow Valley Road today for commuting, whether it's to Centegra, whether it's to the industrial park down Ridgeview Drive, going over to those businesses on 31. And quite frankly, you take your life in your hands, and people go fast down Bow Valley Road. There's no shoulder. So, this will definitely give people that ability to commute. So, it's not just, you know, a nice-to-have Sunday afternoon bicycling thing, it's for people to use for transportation. The third thing, though, and I think the most compelling reason, is economic. I personally went and visited all, I would say, 98% of the businesses that you could access off of Bow Valley, down Ridgeview, into that industrial park, behind Centegra, over to those businesses on 31, and then the big cluster right around 31, and got all of their input as well. There are 58 businesses that actually responded positively to the inquiries. And I wanted just to share with you a handful of quick feedback that they provided me. And these are all the ones clustered around 31, so they would be directly accessible from this new path. Aesthetics, my employee Bikes from Cary, would make it much easier and safer. Bow Valley Dentistry, Safety, they constantly witness people walking and riding along Bow Valley Road. He said, "You've got to have this trail." China House, More Business, Everyone's Family Dental, Do It. Great Clips, More Business To Our End Of Town. Meat Potato, More Traffic For Our Business. Nicolinos, Increased Traffic And Visibility. Taco Burrito, Safe Passage To My Store. And Valley Nails, More Traffic To Our Business. So, it is an economic argument, I think, is even more powerful than just, you know, having 1,000 signatures, although I think that is impressive. We also then asked organizations and some of the more significant businesses if they would be willing to write a letter of support. So, Mayor Jeff, I'll hand these over to you. But we have letters of support from the McHenry County Bicycle Club, who's represented here tonight, of course, the Bicycle Advocates that I'm representing. We also have, State Senator Pamela Althoff has written a letter, as well as the Act of Transportation Alliance, we'll speak to that in a second. But, more impressively, I think, we also have letters from all the bicycle shops in the area, Bike Haven, Epic, Wheel Works, and... Bike Haven, Epic, Wheel Works, and Lucky Break, and Crystal Lake. We also have a letter from Chamber of Commerce. The, we also have a letter from McHenry Savings Bank, and a letter from Centegra Hospital. So, it's quite an impressive array of support that the businesses are showing for this. Last thing I wanted to say, and my lovely assistant here has been holding this forever, it's the
The other one?
The white one. Maybe she could walk around and play Vanna or something. Because I want you to realize, their Active Transportation Alliance has defined what they're calling the Millennium Trail. And the, the connection point to the prairie path is the end of the Millennium Trail. It will extend all the way to Lake Michigan, so that's like fifty miles. There are other gaps in Lake County, but this, they consider one of the highest priorities to get completed. And the point of this is, not just because they've created something and they put a name on it, when you have a connection point like that, you've created a trail system. People look for that when they're looking for places to go. Holly and I do that ourselves. We went to Janesville, we went to Beloit, because they have a system that you can find, that's been published. So, this now sort of would literally put McHenry on the map. You guys will be a hub for tourism, you know, people with money. One anecdote, and I'll be done. So, I'm standing on the prairie path this summer, and three different groups came along. You know, people outraged, recreational writers, and that crazy, you know, twenty-something. So, one group was coming south on McHenry, and they had said, well, we just ate, and where do we go to the, find the Crystal Lake Brewing? And of course, I knew exactly the directions for that. But the other two groups are coming north, and one group said, where can we go eat in McHenry? And the other group said, where can we go get ice cream? So, if we had this trail, you know, they could go east and go to Meat Potato, or Brunch Cafe, or Bulldog Ale House. So, it provides this, this system, it's a trail system, and that's what draws people. So, it's a way for the city to promote tourism, but also it promotes residents to feel better about, about the city they live in, and it's a, it's a draw for potential new residents. So, for those are the reasons that I think it's really important that this project go forward. Health and recreation, safety, but economic, as well as anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll give you, I'll give you the little stats here, just so you have. List all the businesses that I spoke to. Mayor Jeff, I need to give you these letters. Don't tell me if I don't prove these letters. There you go.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to step up to the podium, state your name and your address for public record, please?
I'm Phil.
Last name, please.
Hossiter, which I don't really have to forgive, but. I live, I'm ten-twenty-one Plum Creek, in McHenry, which is on the outside. Problem I'm having is I'd like to know who the zoning compliance officer is for the city of McHenry. I don't know who he is.
Hospital area.
How many years have you been here, working as a city?
No, 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 this isn't question and answer, don't do that, just make your own statement.
But the problem I'm having is ten, is at ten-fourteen North River Road, the building was owned by Chase Herdrick at one time, and it was inside storage only. His truck sat inside, all his materials that he delivered sat inside. The building was sold to Dan Adams Steel. Dan Adams ran it out, the building in different pieces. He has since sold it to whoever owns Master Coil, and now they're manuf, they've been manufacturing. I called the city five years ago when they first moved in, and the city said, no, that's not our building, that's an outside building. It's in the county, so I had to, I have, I worked during the day, so I had a tough time getting to a county meeting. And they said, no, 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 the city took it over when they put water, when they picked up all the buildings along one-twenty. So, I have a building in Green Street, and I talked to Ross, or yeah, Ross, about it, and I talked to Ryan. And I said, there are manufacturing in an industrial, where it was inside storage unit only, not manufacturing. They belong in the Dunyan's Industrial Park or somewhere else. I've taken pictures, they're, when they bring in their concrete trucks, when they're doing the washout, it is going into the storm drain, which runs the river road, which then goes down into the river. The garbage guys come and take the dumpster that the guys are supposed to clean their trucks out into, and it was at six o'clock in the morning, picking the dumpster up and dumping it in their truck, which is really nice for the neighbors. They finally cut it back. But now we're running with the trucks that are going in there to pick up the material that they're making for, making the river crossings out of concrete. The trucks can't make the corner coming off of one-twenty on the river road unless they go into the straight lane going across, going northbound on River Road, the fifty-three-foot trailers. Once they pass that driveway to go into that building, that, that's back in the county, there's a sign, it's no longer a length, they have to run into a length issue. They parked along the road on the wrong side of the road. So, it's obstructing traffic, coming in traffic hazard. It's an eyesore, it doesn't belong in that area, it never did, it was for interior. They're also renting the block building, which was for interior use only, for storage of boxes and stuff like that for Chase Herdrick. And now it's, a company's run out of it. There's no fire breaks, there's no sprinkler system. The, the concrete trucks go inside the building to pour in the forms. It's point concrete, I know most of the drivers, I've been in the industry for many years. And I think it needs to be straightened out, that's all I have to say about it. It's been long enough, five years is long enough. Brian said, in March of last year, he was starting to find him a new place. Well, this is over a year and a half later.
Thank you, Phil. Please step up to the podium, say your first and last names for public record, please.
My name is Abhart White, I live in Crystal Lake, thirty-five, thirty-five oh two South to Kenny Drive, and I am the president of the McHenry County Bicycle Advocates. And we're working, Greg explained it all, we're working to improve non-motorized transportation and recreation in McHenry County. We're working closely with M C Dot and the townships, the cities, the villages, and with Bicycle Club. And I'm personally a bicycle commuter, I have four and a half miles, and I ride year-round, no matter what the temperature. Most of my miles are transportation miles. And I came also here tonight with a bicycle, and took that piece of road along Bull Valley Road. So, and I can attest that it's for traffic-tolerant people like me that can go there, but for the average biker, bicyclist, it's not a good thing. We also, we also have a complete streets petition, which means roads are built for all users, car strikes, bicycle, walking, and we have over two thousand two hundred signatures on there. So, I came here today to voice my support for the multi-use trail along Bull Valley Road, to connect it to the Marin Hill State, to the Marin Hill State Park and Henry Dam system, and as Greg explained, continuing into the Millennium Trail, into the county, and all the way to the, to Michigan. So, I wanted to encourage you to vote today on the governmental, intergovernmental agreement, to plan for that trail. And I want to tell you that whatever issues you have within the city, we, we are glad to help and to, we have advice. We have lots of people that are on the road on a daily basis, myself, other people that live in McHenry, you can see some of the Bicycle Club people. And very often, especially when you redo a road, when you do resurfacing, restriping, there can be improvements made at absolutely no cost, it's just a matter of how you lay down the lines and things like this. And we have lots of experience with that, and I would like to encourage you to work with us and get us involved in things like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please step up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Christine Kushtre, and do you need to have my name spelled? Okay, I live at fifty-two, thirteen, nineteen College Pressing in McHenry. I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Defenders of McHenry County. I'm co-chair of the Transportation Committee, along with Gary Canner, and just want to voice our support as the defenders for the Bull Valley Gap multi-use trail. Definitely, personally, I try to commute, I work in Ron Lake, so I've taken Malador and off twelve, and Malador they just put in light, so that's been a big help, but also having this multi-use trail will definitely provide that extra safety net for me, and I'm sure tons of other people, like the First Gentleman was talking about, with the economic growth, lots of businesses that I can walk to, they're maybe a mile, even the rec center, I could, I would fight to, but I wouldn't right now. So, definitely, I would like you guys to think about it, and for I B S defenders, for that support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the, anyone else in the public that would like to make a public comment? See none. Moving on to the next agenda, is the consent agenda. Is any council members wanting to pull any items for separate discussion or consideration? Alden Leib?
Yeah, hi. Minutes.
I or J?
Or Z, J, sorry. We didn't, yes, J.
Uh, any other things pulled? No? This time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the following consent agendas, agenda items, nine A through nine I, and item nine K. Alderwoman Kindon?
I would move to approve the consent agenda minus J.
I'll second. Alderman Santi? Any discussion regarding these items? Clerk, please call over.
Alderwoman Kindon?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The one item that we left off is consent agenda nine J, and I'm looking for a motion on this item. Alden Curry?
Make a move to approve.
Second, Alderwoman Kindon. Discussion on this item? Alden Leib?
Yeah, the reason why I pulled it is because of the situation where we have an alderman that would like to be addressed as alderwoman, I have no problem addressing that person as an alderwoman. However, when it talks about city documents, it should reflect as far as what the proper position is, as far as what is on the books. We experienced here with the police chief, the police chief and the deputy chief, and every elected official that's up at this desk also swore as far as to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Illinois. I don't know how many people have ever read entirely the Constitution of Illinois, I don't think I have, as far as everything and anything with all the amendments and everything else. However, it specifically states in there that as far as representatives for the city, unless it's changed by a referendum, we follow what the General Assembly dictates as far as positions. And therefore, state statute shows as far as the General Assembly, that it's alderman. Granted, it's a term that's been around for fifty-two years, sounds sexist to some extent, and I can understand where alderman, alderwoman stands as far as her position on it. It brings women to light as far as the fact that they sit at public, you know, as far as representation and in business and everything else. However, there is proper ways that we do it, and that means that if we wish to have specifics like alderwoman, then, then we need to have that addressed by a power higher than us. We're not, we're, we're basically supposed to follow state statutes, that is not following state statutes when we put that in documents that state otherwise. And for that reason, I can't take an, an O B S on meeting minutes, and unless it reflects proper what the state statute has. And I'm not trying to be sexist or anything else, and I really don't want to get into a debate about this, but I wouldn't really have a problem as far as if somebody wanted to bring up a resolution, and I could support that, to change it at the state level, because that's what it is to be done now here.
Alderwoman Kindon?
I, in the letter that I read, requesting that I be addressed appropriately, I did note that our ordinances did refer to the position in the male gender for all positions. I truly suspect, I could not find the original date of that document and its approval, but I truly suspect at the time it was initiated that there was never a consideration that women would hold an office. As, as I also stated, women, it isn't that long ago that women even got the right to vote. And so, I, and I had mentioned to the mayor and city administrator several times, I thought it was appropriate to make that ordinance change and be reflected appropriately. Again, I had that conversation with both of them even as of today. I, I'm not familiar with the state statute that you're referring to, I would love that information, and I have no problem, having worked at the state Capitol for years and still know many people in the House and Senate. If that requires a state statute change, I'm happy to push for that. But, that said, I also think that I was sworn in technically, as Alderman Glad stated, as alderman. And I am in my fourteen or fifteenth year, I've been here a long time. And I've been addressed as alderman, alderwoman. I found offensive as alderperson, but I'm not really big on titles, and I think every staff director here has, if, when they, police officers, I, I ask them to call me by my first name. Titles aren't that important to me, because I think I'm just human like the rest of us, and that's who I want to represent, is just that ordinary person. But, that said, women have had to fight for a whole long time and really hard to be recognized for what we are. And I'm a woman, there's nothing wrong with that. I've worked in government and politics with my dad, when he was elected official, following around, him around. And while I, I appreciate the fact that, that we do need to do things legally, as Alderman Glad had stated, and I think it's an easy fix for the ordinance to be changed, I, I hope that will be coming next month in, in our agendas. I don't know, I, I guess I would refer to Attorney McArdle if, if Home World would outweigh that. I don't know, I guess I would refer to Attorney McArdle if home rule would outweigh that. I don't know, or, you know, if we do need to do something further into a legal document in Springfield, and I'm happy to bring up that cause because for every woman, I don't know how many women have been on city council. I know at least that I'm one of three. I don't know how many others have been over the course of the years, but it's a matter of respect, and I do that respect. I volunteer for many organizations and many things in this community, and I do that for the betterment of this community, but I think I deserve that respect.
So the mayor asked me to address this. I, I think Andy's point is straight, and everybody understands where he's coming from. The only thing I think he would, would sideways on a little bit is the fact that we need an amendment at the state level in order to accomplish this, that that's not really the case. I haven't researched this, but I would say with some certainty that your status as a municipality, period, without being home rule, is plenty to instruct the staff to address you people however you want to be addressed, and whatever you say, we're going to do by way of majority. Home rule makes it even more powerful, and I don't think you need a state authority to have a challenge called whenever you need to be called. I think it will be a challenge to change the ordinance though, because that reference to alderman, it probably gets into the thousands. And I don't even really know what that involves, but there's a lot of, a lot of references. And the way our ordinance reads is, there's a definitional correction made a long time ago, a gender type definitional thing. So the reference to alderman means, you know, gender neutral, something to that effect. We can make it more specific, we can actually change it, you know, we're going to have a code, and we're going to be dealing with our code anyway here shortly. But for the time being, it's whatever the alderman direct, whatever you call it as a group, we'll do. That's the answer.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, as usual, I do my homework. Unfortunately, Attorney McArdle was privileged to this earlier.
Right.
To really do the research, but I can tell you that Article 7, Section 6 in the Constitution basically addresses home rule. And there is another section for non-home rule, and this is for home rule townships and municipalities as far as that they will follow what the General Assembly dictates. And the General Assembly shows as far as divisions by words as alderman. And like I said, I can definitely support a resolution to the state to have a change, but it needs to be changed at the state, and we don't have any authority to change that state statute as home rule.
Well, I can look at the section. I know the section he's referring to, and I'm familiar with the sentence he's referring to. I just have, I can't imagine that the Constitution says, you know, this whole clause is about the word alderman and not about the rest of the provision of home rule. I just, I'd have to read it, but, look, from, until I look at it and make a move, whatever you want us to call you, we're going to call you. That's my direction to the, to the staff, is we're going to do what a majority of the city council wants, and we'd like the direction tonight. If you want to put it off for two weeks, that's fine too, but I think the say of the city council on this is important.
Alderman Curry?
Well, I just have a question, isn't it? I don't know about the realities of what has been said, but isn't the, I mean, what's at issue tonight is the minutes, right? Isn't the, the whole point of the minutes, you know, when you look at the Open Meetings Act, the whole point of the minutes, I think the only thing in there is that you have to identify, you know, who's present, what the issues are, and who voted and how they voted. And it has to, I mean, I guess my question is, is it not clear who's here and who voted? I mean, for the issue of minutes, I'm not talking about any other issues that might be out there. I don't know what they are, other documents, but for voting on the minutes, it just seems to me that it's pretty basic. In fact, if you look at who's here, attendance at the top of the minutes, it doesn't even say alderman, it says council members. And we're all referred to, and then everywhere else, we're, except for in the text, you know, like the voting, we're just referred to by our last names. So it's, I mean, and I don't know, I'm asking the question, isn't, isn't burden is just so that the public understands what happened? Kind of the, this one now with the overarching verdicts. And I don't know about other ones, I'm just talking about the minutes right now.
That's all correct? Absolutely. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, again, I had discussions with county clerk, actually, and I just happened to bump into her one day and just happened to talk to her about it. She agreed with me, in fact, that it should be according to what is the proper and legal titles that we hold. And, you know, again, I have no problem addressing her as alderwoman condem at meeting, but when it is documented on paper, then it should reflect the proper titles that are held. And that's my privilege on it. And that's why, again, you know, when we pull a petition, we pull petition into the office that we run for as alderman. If they said alderwoman, and I ran for that, then that's, I guess, the title I would hold, you know, but-
Would you run for alderwoman?
If that was the title, and I'm just saying, you know, but then-
And that's not personal to you, I doubt?
No, and I understand. But, and like I said, I, you know, I don't really want to get into, you know, a whole political battle here on this thing, but, but more than anything else is, you take a look at the speed sign on Dartmoor, why? Control speed, why? Because people break the law. Who's supposed to set the example? But your leaders of the community, we're the ones that are supposed to set the example. So that means we follow the law. And if the law states that the position is alderman, then that's what it should be. And it's when you start bending rules and laws and state statutes here and there, a little tweak here, a little tweak there, that's where things get out of control. You know, I mean, you take it at other parts of the state, you know, there are a lot of things that happen that people don't get called, but I just feel that that is my position. And again, I don't really want to get into big debate, more so than anything else. I just wanted to explain why I was pulling it, why that's important, the minutes, the way that they're written.
Alderman?
One last comment, and I just, I had to address that as, and Alderman, because Alderman Glad mentioned, you know, setting an example, and that's what I'm trying to do. I'm not going to run again. I, I don't, this isn't any big statement. I'll finish my 16 years here as service, but I wanted to set the precedent for future women in our community to be appropriate. And talking about setting an example, I want to be able to look at future young women who can come forward in service and get the respect that they deserve. And so, if not who, if not me, then who? And that's why I'm doing it now. There were several things that I'm not going to get to those specific that were unsettling over the course of the years that finally was the final straw and thought, you know, if someone doesn't take up this fight, then, then it go, then that error of disrespect continues, and that's what I'm starting. So, and I respect that, and I do want, I, when I first mentioned it that evening, I talked about the legality, that we needed to change things legally. And again, I can't address the state statute, it's only our local ordinances all that are referenced, but I am willing to go to the Springfield and make that changeable. You know, Attorney McArdle, I have utmost respect for you, and I get that it might be challenging, and it might be challenging in Springfield too, but again, the question remains, if somebody doesn't do it, you know, at one time, again, going back to, women didn't even have the right to vote, and if somebody didn't push that along, we'd still not have women even voting, let alone sitting in this council, and I'm not willing to let that go any farther. So it might be hard, but I'm willing to take on that.
Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, all I say, and I've said it before, is the fact that I would support a resolution, and maybe we come up with a resolution if the rest of the council felt comfortable about that, to send it down to Springfield to get things started. I have no problem with that. And I think it's an issue that maybe needs to be cleared up. You know, but again, let's get it cleared up the way it's, it needs to be, and really down in Springfield is the place that it needs to be debated naturally. Here, we need to follow what the state statute said.
Thank you. Is majority of council willing to move forward with this item? Raise your hands. For them to move forward. Right, can we, I mean, because you said we can either wait or-
Well, on the minutes, you should, you should deal with the minutes. If you want to table-
Right.
We already have a motion.
Right, if you want to table the minutes. I get it, but if the alternative is to table it, if you want to vote on it, we ought to do away with the minutes, and then get direction for, to the staff on what to do in the next, the next step.
Alderman Santi?
So we need a motion on the minutes.
Do you have a question?
No, I'm fine, I'm fine, he answered.
Any other discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alder McHenry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is the action item. Looking for a resolution setting the property tax levy request for 2017, collected in 2018 at $4,618,786, and establish the date of December 4, 2017, to conduct a public hearing to consider approval for property tax levy. Carolyn, can you please present this item?
Attached, you can see the information that you would need to establish the 2017 property tax levy amount. We're also looking to set December 4, 2017, as the property tax levy public hearing. And if you have any questions?
Any discussion from council on this item? Alderman Glad?
All I want to say is the fact that I'm glad to see us kind of having a little flat tax. However, I would have liked to see a decrease, and I understand, you know, that, hey, we've got a lot of things to do, and you just can't keep cutting it and cutting it. When we did cut it, unfortunately, we would have hoped that others that were really impacting our property taxes would have followed suit, and who knows, maybe they will down in the near future. But I'm glad to see where it's at.
Thank you. Alderman Santi?
Where the motion, well, once the motion's made, it's for the hearing on December 4.
You're setting the amount here on December 4.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Curry?
Well, just a comment, in the Finance Committee, when we discussed the levy and recommended the flat levy go forward, which is the $4,602,000, one of the things that, you know, is last year, we reduced the levy by 3%, but one of the things that does come into play this year is that we, correct me on the numbers, but we are going to be kind of, the state's going to come in and take some of our revenue, is that correct?
Correct. They are already, they are already taking 10% of income tax and 2% of home rule sales tax.
And that amounts to, if I remember, one of the numbers was like $312,000?
It's about $330 total.
Okay. So that's effectively based on what we did last year, if you, if you looked at that as a property tax, which I know it isn't, but in effect, it's a, it's a, based on property taxes, it's a 6% decrease. So if we hold it flat, we're going to lose the effect of the 6% because, you know, I know it comes into play with sales tax and others, but that's, that is the effect, so. So by holding it flat, we are in a way, I mean, I don't want to do political double speak here and say we're reducing it, we're not really doing that. I mean, obviously, the homeowner's not seeing that further reduction, but the homeowner will see, hopefully, will see a flat. I know it varies depending on the valuations, but, so, I guess that was one of considerations as to why, one of the reasons we would have recommended a further reduction this year.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item in council? This time, I'll open up to public input. Is there anyone from the public that I'd like to make a public comment on this item? See none, I'm moving to make a motion to approve a resolution setting the property tax levy request for 2017, collected in 2018 at $4,618,786, and establish the date of December 4, 2017, to conduct, to conduct a public hearing to consider approval of the property tax levy. Alderman Curry?
So moved.
And Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McHenry?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is to approve, to approve a sign variance at 2,000 North Richmond Road for DYN McHenry Commons LLC to allow a second shopping center entrance sign greater than 15 feet in height and 3 feet height variance for a maximum sign height of 28 feet. Ross, can you please present this item?
Thank you, mayor. Community Development Department has received a permanent application from First Midwest Group for the construction of a new freestanding shopping center sign in the Commons Shopping Center. Shopping Center currently has one development entrance sign south of the American Matches Outlet with a height of 15, exceeding 15 feet. A variance request was submitted to allow a second development entrance sign in excess of 15 feet on the north end of the property.
Thank you. Council, any questions on this item? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, a question, just, and I talked to the administrator earlier on this, but it just occurred to me, it's, it's maximum sign height is 28 feet measured at street level. What is the, what is the height above the ground and where the sign is located?
It's three, about three feet.
I'm sorry.
The total?
So if I, if I stand there by the sign and I measure from the ground up, how's-
25.
25.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Upon review, I mean, it's visually, we're fine in regards to incoming traffic.
Yes, it's set, it's set further enough back, it's not going to create any vision triangle issues.
Right. Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, unfortunately, this whole thing is coming to light because of the fact that we have two owners of the shopping center that are, it's split, and we have several shopping centers that are developed like that. I just think that this and other issues that come up, I think to some extent that because of that situation, that we should remember that in the future, when hopefully we get some bigger developments like that.
Any other discussion? Moving to public input, is there anyone from the public that'd like to make public input on this item? Moving on, for a motion to approve a sign variance at 2,000 North Richmond Road for DYN McHenry Commons LLC to allow a second shopping center entrance sign greater than 15 feet in height and 3 feet height variance for a maximum sign height of 28 feet. Alderman Santi?
I will make that motion.
Second? Alderman Glad?
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman McHenry?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is to approve an ordinance granting a use variance from Article 4 residential districts to allow a two-family dwelling at 3806 Waukegan Road. Doug, can you please present the title?
Thank you, Mayor Jentney. Excuse me, the applicant is seeking a variance from Article 4 residential districts to allow two-family dwelling at 3806 Waukegan Road. Happy to answer any question may have.
Council, I'm going to open up for discussion. Alderman Curry?
Basic question. We had, we had another one of these a month or so ago. This is basically exactly the same type of thing, right? Yes, just different, just different property. Yes, it's like a, what, a couple blocks down the road on the other side or something, if I remember right. Yes, okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council on this item? Moving to public for input on this item, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment? I see none. At this time, look for a motion to approve an ordinance granting a use variance from Article 4 residential district- from Article IV residential districts to allow a two-family dwelling at 3806 Wakegan Road. Alderman Santee?
I will make the motion for the use variance from Article IV residential district to allow the two-family dwelling at 3806 Wakegan Road as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Alderman Devine?
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
Quick comment. I just noticed in the packet, and again, just as long as it gets recorded properly, but in the packet, the recommendation says two-story dwelling, which came up before.
Oh, let's take them off.
Should say two families. So as long as the motion gets recorded properly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the law.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glan?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a gravel pit update. 10A presentation by Lafarge Aggregates, followed by an outline of agreement, review, and renewal process. Randy Willie is here this evening to do that presentation.
As, I'll just introduce again briefly some council members now. Mr. Willie from Lafarge Meyer. Is it just Lafarge now, Randy, or Meyer's name still on?
The land is still in our land trust that Meyer Materials is a beneficiary. It's a branding process right now, so.
So some council members know Mr. Willie. They were able to take, you were able to take advantage of a tour of the site with him. We asked, knowing that the agreements are coming out due in, in May, in April, May, thought we would start to prop the conversation with, with Lafarge Meyer by asking Mr. Willie to come tonight, give an update to all councils in case you weren't able to go on a, on a physical tour of the, of the site, be able to hear an update on where the project is at, where the mining operation is at, let him bring us all up to date. And then Attorney McArdle will provide an outline of what the process will be to be able to get public, our council input and have conversations with Meyer, Lafarge Meyer, as we move towards renegotiating the agreements again that are due in April or May. So look back.
So actually, before Randy starts, I handed out a, a map that he's got in front of him as well. This is an overview of their pit. And if you look at the colors there, you can just orient yourself so that when you're talking, Randy, and you get into those specific photos, you might be able to tell which parcel we're in, because I didn't know. Maybe everybody else does. So parcel A was annexed in '76. Parcel B then came in in '77, modified in '88. Parcel C came in, modified in '88. Parcel D came in in '90, and then E came in in '98. And all of those now are what we're talking about expiring in May of next year.
In totality.
Right, right. We made them all over, over the years. If you look at the big picture, they all kind of coalesced and they, they're all ending in May.
Just give, just give me a nod, Randy.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for the introduction and, and good evening. I'll do my best to talk slowly because there's a little bit of a long tail process. This mine is now 60 to 65 years old. And there's probably 15 years at a best estimate remaining on the surface. So I'm Randy Willie. I'm, I'm with Lafarge Aggregates. I'm also a 35-year employee of Meyer Materials, so I date back to the Miller family acquisitions. Still talk to Alan on a regular basis. But we'll, we'll probably go to the next slide because what I want to tie in there is that aerial photograph, I, I thought maybe we'd have a, a larger screen so I could maybe do some pointing, but I, I guess I'll, I'll take the exhibit that's in front of you and do my best to tie in. The parcel A that was annexed in 1976 is not part of the renewal of the conditional use for coming next spring. That is an industrial I-zone permanent.
So that agreement expired, but the zoning survived and it's there?
It's there.
Okay.
And that parcel still includes a ready-mixed concrete batch plant and an asphalt batching plant and associated maintenance buildings and our current office building, which is for sale. That's all encompassing there. Parcels B, C, D, and E are, are the conditional use that is expiring that we need to talk about going forward. And I know I've had the pleasure of having a couple people out this summer for tours and, and we're still more than welcome while the weather's still sunny, at least today. You need to go out and, and see it, but I'll try to walk through this as best I can. Again, our ownership history dates back to the early 50s. Chuck Miller's family owned it. Meyer Material Company acquired it from the Miller family in 1988. And that was just after the annexation of the properties that are, I'll call it west of the school in the blue and the green, B and C. Meyer Material Company was sold off in 2006 to a company called Aggregate Industries, which is a division of Wholesome Limited out of Switzerland. So Meyer Material was converted into a corporate entity and just in time for a pretty major recession to hit the material supply business. And over the next four or five years, we downsized, divested, and ultimately came out in a merging situation with a company called Lafarge. Lafarge is based in France. Between wholesome and Lafarge, they combine in, in the Portland cement manufacturing arena, probably in a top five producer in the world. They also have a division that is where I work, which is the asphalt, concrete, and aggregates division. I, I manage about 50 sites between Milwaukee and Memphis. I'm based here. I used to live in McHenry up until about five years ago. Our permit history, and I think Attorney McArdle touched on it, it's been a series of annexations because it's a surface mine. So we've actually added on farmland as we've grown and going west. And that's followed with a series of conditional use permits. And the conditional use permits trap a lot of stuff that we'll have to negotiate, I suppose, in, in springtime. But a lot of our police-powered events occur in a city ordinance. That's actually a city mining ordinance. And that includes the hours of operation, bonding requirements, setback distances from certain property boundaries. Also, we have operational plans and reclamation plans to show which sequence of the mine we're going to next. Next slide. Just to give you a snapshot of where we are today, this property is west of Illinois State Bank at Kern and Route 120. And if you go, if you're familiar with the Glacier Ridge and Wood Creek subdivisions, those are on the east end of that page right there. And those are all single-family estate lots. We're currently mining in, in the phases, I think it was 14, 15, 16, 17, which is part of the mine plan down in that southwestern corner. And there's a lot going on there right now because you can see where there's some farmland in, in the, in the middle of the picture, and that's still row crop farmland at the Hogan Farm for us. And then we periodically strip pieces of land as we're moving from south to north and mine the aggregates and convey them back to the processing site. Now, the processing site is up in the upper left-hand corner, which is all the way up near Route 120. And that's where all of the stockpiling, sorting, scaling, and truck traffic goes in and out onto Route 120. So you're talking about pretty much everything west of, of those two subdivisions is also west of the grade school, which is Valley View Elementary, which is parcels B, C, D, and E. We've developed some good relationships along the way with the neighbors because as we strip land, we're, we're going to be depositing overburden in their backyards, trying to knock on doors. We've actually met with homeowners associations at Wood Creek and Burning Tree before. Probably need to work on a, on a dialogue with the Glacier Ridge residents as well as we march for, you know, closer to their homes. We are operating within the plans that we have put for the city for many years. You can see on the slide, there's, as far as the mining ordinance with the city, our crushing hours are 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So that's our field operations and our plant. And then 6:00 to 2:00 on Saturdays, but I think we've worked Saturdays beyond noon in a very long time. Our, our loading hours start at 5:00 AM for loading trucks. That's up near Route 120. And that goes till 8:00 PM, but normal operating hours, they start early and they usually quit early unless there's a specific job. The wash plant, when it can wash, if there's enough material to wash, we are allowed to wash 24 hours a day. I don't think we've washed on, beyond 6:00 PM in, in the last 10 years. It's just a matter of how much material we would have on the ground. Again, there are numerous setback zones. They vary. Some depend on the, the field crusher, how close it can get to property lines. Some have to do with residential and non-residential property lines. They vary between 50 feet to as much as 450 feet. And we're just coming off of a, a double 10-year renewal period with our CUP. The, the city ordinance requires that we come back every 10 years. We had two 10s in a row, and we haven't been back with any new land. So there was never an extension provided. So next spring, I think May 5th, is our, our deadline to come back and, and get our extension for our initial use. Next slide, please. A little bit about what we do. Some of you have been out there firsthand to see what we do. I just tried to break it down into a couple of slides, but I talked about the stripping of overburden. So there's row crop farmland where we're heading, you know, near Glacier Ridge right now. And this is a picture I took really from the end of Chickaloon Drive where the equipment is, is actually stripping the top 10 feet or so of top soil and silty clays off the top of the deposit. And then they're placing it on the bottom photo along the property lines. You can see we install silt fencing off the property setback. The property setback's 50 feet. So we put silt fencing in and we leave that in place until we can get grassy vegetation to take a stand, and then we can take the silt fence out. The berm provides a, a natural buffer. There's, the, the visual screen alone is probably, a lot of people don't like the sight of dirt being turned up. So we leave them grassy. We don't put trees on them because ultimately they're going to come back down in the restoration process. So all we're going to do is plant trees and several years later, knock them down, which is, is not good. Next slide here. So once we've taken the strippings off of the top of, of the material, you can see up on the, in the upper slide is the high wall. And you can see in the, in the top layer is the stripping that's been taken off. And then you can see how the, the glacial period left that natural shelf. And there's probably 40 to 55 feet of coarse and fine sand and gravel in those seams in some of our best pictures. Now, sand and gravel was left 40,000 years ago when the glaciers retreated. And ultimately, that stuff was laid out in sheets and it's unconsolidated. So if you're not familiar with mining, we don't blast. This is not a limestone quarry. We don't drill holes and drop dynamite. This is unconsolidated. It really just starts to fall right to you. We use a front-end loader primarily, and that's in the bottom picture, but that's a picture of the, the loader actually up dumping into the field crusher. And he bumps the, the bank and, and the materials come down haphazardly. And we put it on a, on a, close to a, like a grizzly screen, takes some big boulders out and the rest fall into a jaw crusher, which crushes anything from four to six inches. And it all goes on a belt. Most of the material that we take is taken above water. And when I say above water, there's a shallow water aquifer that we don't drink out of here. It's basically precipitation generated. But everything that drains through the farm field drains through that sand and gravel seam. And, and there's an aquifer. So you've probably seen in Crystal Lake, there's several parks where ponds are created. And, and it's analogous to, you dug along a beachfront and with your shovel and then all of a sudden water came up when you were a little bit farther from the shore. And this is the, the same concept. It's just a lot bigger. If the gravel deposit runs into the aquifer, as in cases it does, and in some of our borings it shows, we are planning on creating a couple of series of water bodies. Now, when, when we mine wet, we actually mine blindly and we use a backhoe. Or if it's deeper, we use a dragline. So maybe you've seen some of those types of pieces of equipment in some of the other pits in the area. The majority of it is done at that bottom pit with a front-end loader. I mean, that's a union job. It's local 150. And we keep two or three loaders running all day, a couple of associated haul trucks when we need to. Next slide. And this is the, the conveying and processing. Conveying is all electric. There's, there's no diesel motors out there other than what's on the caterpillar equipment. We convey the, the raw sand and gravel via conveyor belts. We probably at, at the west pit have three-quarters of a mile to a mile of conveyor belts with transfer points. And in, in the bottom picture, you see it's heading towards the, the main production surge pile, which actually goes through a series of screens and smaller crushers. So we can take rock, that is four inches, and crush it down into two inch or inch and a half. And everything that we're mining on the site is actually state spec IDOT approved. So whether it's a bridge deck, or if it's just mainline concrete for homes, or it's asphalt chips, or we make, we used to own pay block company out in Marengo. So they used a lot of pay gravel and sand. We have a small vendor who mixes fine sands with peat for golf course turf. There's just a variety of applications. Roofing gravels, base for roads, and it's necessary for development and growth anywhere here in the city or outside of the city. We typically ship within about a 15-mile radius. The closest plant we have to here is down in El Goguen. So Meyer Material was a McHenry County-based operation. So we had several in, in this In addition to what we mine here, we are allowed to bring in spent asphalt and concrete. We do have plants that are adjacent to us on the existing sites. And they can bring in crushed from, from road bases and stuff. And if they're not going to use them back in their mix, we can recycle them and sell them as aggregate as well. So it's, we, we, the tonnage is amazing over the years as far as how much we've been able to recycle and put back into the mainstream. Next slide here. On the property restoration, I got a giggle when I pulled this up because that slide is actually the artwork that was prepared in probably 1979 or 80 by Associated Planners. And that was the original restoration plan for Trax B and C. And that would be, would show where the, where the school would be up in the upper right-hand corner. That notch up there is Valley View School. So you can see where they had showed where there was ponds. And, and that is a little bit arbitrary. Those ponds may get bigger. They may get longer, depending on where we chase the deposit and how Mother Nature left it. But ultimately, there's a series of vegetated slopes around the perimeter of the site that slope back down to the, the mine floor. There's an additional one on the next slide, but we'll stay on here. The Thompson Farm, which was bolted onto the operation in 1998, had a more engineered drawing attached to it, but we'll, we'll show you that. A couple of things that are noteworthy, our restoration project is continuous. The mining business, you can't just wait until the end of a mine and start putting dirt back because if you handle it one time, it's a lot better than handling it two or three times. So we like to strip dirt from a cell and put it in position where it can be used for restoration. And so we've been building slopes continuously, and I'll show you a couple of photos. There are several areas where we can't restore on the floor yet because the processing and conveying equipment are going to be in the way. We use that to stockpile additional pieces of equipment. We also stockpile certain products that we can't move right away. The inventories of certain things we consume faster than others. But many of the slopes on the perimeter have been restored and are being used for agricultural purposes while the mine phase continues. We'll go to the next slide. Can't really see it very well, but that's a more engineered version. You can see the contours if you look real carefully. That's the west end on the Thompson Farm. That would be Ridge Road across the top of that picture. That's all been restored with the exception of we've, we've left a little bit of dirt on the perimeter as a safety, but we'll bring that down when we're fully in retreat. We do bond with the city of McHenry. We have $300,000 bonds with the city. And also, all of our properties here are permitted with the state of Illinois under the Department of Natural Resources. And actually, there's a secondary bond that is actually attached to each of those permits as well. We're, we're still working on, on, I'll call it the south and southeast corners. And, and I don't have a photograph here of it, but where the Burning Tree subdivision, maybe we'll go up a slide and we'll get to it. Where we're filming along the Burning Tree subdivision and getting close to the Wood Creek subdivision is going to take a lot of dirt because it's, it's a, it's a large point area. Here's a couple of pictures of some finished areas. This is, that's along Ridge Road. On, on the right-hand side, you're looking at Ridge Road in the background. And then the one on the left is actually looking towards Burning Tree from about the same spot. So unless you're out there and get a feel for the acreage that's out there, we've had a considerable amount of area restored and bonds returned from the state. If you go to the next slide, this is If you go to the next slide, this is looking a little bit farther east, so that's Burning Tree heading east towards Wood Creek. So, you can see way in the back where the cursor is, that's an area where we're starting ...we're filling. So, as we're stripping dirt from new cells, we're carrying it around to that corner. Then, as you move farther to the right, you can see where it's starting to green. We go through a phase where things wash out a little bit, and then we go back and restore it. And then ultimately, we put topsoil on it and start getting some farming out of it. And it's kind of nice to work with a third-party contractor these days to get the dirt back in place in a suitable manner where a guy like Mike Hogan can get out there and get some crops on it and start redeveloping the site. So, there are several areas. If you go to the next slide, that'll show you along Route 120. That's an area that's been restored for probably 15 to 17 years. That's right by our mine entrance, so that's a couple thousand feet west of the grade school. And that whole area has been stabilized for many years. And again, it's a puzzle, but we're working towards getting it all done at the same time. It doesn't all come together while you're mining, but after mining's completed, then you can kind of finish the areas where you need to. Next slide is really where are we today? And that picture is the farmer who's actually out on Current Road stirring up a little dust on his own. So, everybody's got, I'd say, land-use dust emission issues, and we're no different. We're continuing to extract along these boundaries, along the homes. We're planning on moving north and getting back towards, I call it, there's a 10-acre grove of woods that was gifted to the Glacier Ridge residents, and then we would mine around that. We're looking at resurfacing our main haul road off of Route 120. It's been in place now for 17 years, and it's getting run out, and we want to improve our ability to control trackout. So, resurfacing that is on our CapEx budget for this year. Provide information to neighbors as necessary. I've met with the homeowners at Woods Creek probably four times, and met with Burning Tree at least twice. I'm probably going to reach out a little bit more to Glacier Ridge as we start making more activities known up there, so we can tell them what we're doing. Monitoring compliance of adjacent businesses. We have Current Contracting running an asphalt plant, and we have Ozinga, who is now running the batch plant, the concrete plant that we used to operate. So, we...we're an ISO 14,000 company. We have an environmental management system. We do pay attention to what they do as well as part of what we do. And we're going to seek additional time to mine out parcels because we're not done. The economy 2008, 2009 through '12 was horrible. I don't know how many building permits have been issued in the city of McHenry in the last five or six years, but it's probably been a pretty small number. And that drove our concrete business. Ultimately, we ended up divesting that concrete business to Ozinga's. So, now we supply the rock that goes into Ozinga and Current's businesses. And then maintaining visibility in the community. I've sat next to Kate over here because I've spent a little bit of time trying to stay active with the McHenry Area Chamber. We've worked at the parades. I think we've served here a couple of times, try to keep our employees as active as we can in the community. So, those are all things that we're striving to do better. Lastly, just as far as the picture for renewal, we haven't talked about the piece on the north side of Route 120 because it's permitted and it's good until 2022, but we do have 157 acres on the north side of 120 across the street from where we processed. And that was...we have a tunnel underneath the road, and we started conveying material under there in '03, '04, '05. And our product mix started to get a little away from us because that's a little bit finer deposit over there. So, we ended up slowing production down on that side, and ultimately, the recession made us stop altogether. The conveyor belt is not even under that tunnel anymore. So, I guess what we're looking at longer term is not only do we need more time on the south side, but we'd like to combine the north side with it so that the permits are in lockstep, so we're not coming to the council today, and then six years from now, we'll be back from the other side of the street because eventually, we're going to be mining that parcel, you know, sooner rather than later. So, we'd be better off to have both parcels in sync because we can't close the processing plant in parcel D on the bottom of that picture until we mine out everything on the parcel on the north side of 120. So, it's in one way or another, they need to be together at some point.
Could you just repeat that last thing? You can't do one with D?
The processing plant is on parcel D, which is part of the conditional use that we are planning to renew. The parcel on the north side of the street is a separate annexation.
So, you would process it on D?
It needs to be processed on D. So, therefore, they need to operate together. So, it would be our wish to bring them both together. And that's a suggestion that we've discussed is adding 10 years to the south side for conditional use and a four-year variance, or making it a 14-year period. And that way, the, you know, we'd be in lockstep then with a...again, a 10-year on the north side, so it would all expire in 2022. And that's, I guess, at this point, where I'm at with our, I guess, past, present, and future plan. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer or take down notes and get back to you, or you can come out for a tour.
Hold on a second. You got a question?
Yeah, Randy, just to make sure of the last statement. So, you want to combine both the north and south properties having the same agreement regarding terms?
Yeah, it would be one permit.
Okay. So, even though the fact right now is that north is out until 2022?
Yeah.
Okay. And just to confirm, in parcel A is where the two plants are, correct?
Right.
I know you lease them, but that's where concrete blacktop is?
That's where the concrete and the asphalt plants are, and that's a permanent I-1 zone.
And one more thing. You're...well, I mean, you might still be open. You know, you're still active out there because of weather, or you guys are pretty much closed off?
No, like, an asphalt operation who we service
Yeah.
will probably stay open till Thanksgiving or maybe thereafter. The concrete plant, depending what work is available, they can heat water and they can run into December
Gotcha.
if there's work available.
And the reason I brought it up is that I was one of the aldermen that accepted your invite to the tour, having very little knowledge in the industry. It was very educational, and I just...I don't know how much time he has left between now and the end of the year when he's available or available to give you the tour, but it took him out an hour's worth of time. But there was definitely some very interesting things, especially how they kind of...what I spotted is how they actually relay the land and, you know, they refarm it or just, you know, re...I don't know how to say it, refurbish it with plant life.
Yep.
But, I mean, I would...if you have a chance, I know we can reach him through the state or whatever. I would recommend doing that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
First of all, a comment to echo Alderman Sandy's comment that I would encourage all of council, if you can, to get out there and take a look. One of the concerns that has come up was reclamation is the word you're looking for when they...we get done with an area and they reclaim it. You know, I had a question come to me about it, and during my tour of it, you know, Randy can show you how they do that and the progression of that. And they...if you...actually, if you pull out the reclamation plans, they follow it pretty exactly. The only deviation from the original plan is the fact that we...in 1998, when they annexed parcel E, it didn't make sense to do the mining in this original scheme because essentially, if you can think about it, they were going to go around the top along 120 and then come down the south and by the subdivisions and come back up, which is where they're at now. So, they had to change that and go out and pick up parcel E first. So, that's really the only deviation from the original reclamation plan. They do a really good job reclaiming the land as they go. Now, if you've never looked at one of these, you might not...in some areas, you might not realize that, and Randy touched on it a minute ago. You've got to reclaim the slope first, then you're going to get some erosion before, you know, because you've got to get something growing. And then they have to go back and do a little more work, and then they actually get the crops growing. But they've done a pretty good job of that. I was going to mention the north side, but you finally got to it because that wasn't on this map and it wasn't on your original map. So, when I was out...so, you have...you think you have 14 years left on the south side?
Our best guess at it right now, and it's hard because of the economy, you don't know how quickly
Yeah.
things get, you know...
So, you're...
Demand is going to vary.
Okay. So, your plan then would be to...at some point, you're going to have to mine, if you're going to go 10 years on the north and 14 on the south, in four years, you've got to mine both of them at the same time then, right, to get done, right? You've got to start at some point to...
Eventually, yeah. Eventually, you're going to have to start filtering the north property back in because that was the original
Right.
plan. And I think what will happen is, once we get a little bit further north on the south parcel, everything that we're going to mine from there on is going to be very fine, and they'll probably change the configuration of the plant because we're going to create ponds last, and that's where a lot of the finer deposits are on the south parcels. And the north parcel is mostly sand, so it'll become more of a sand operation.
Okay. Now, just to touch back on parcel A is I-1 zone, right?
Correct.
And it does not have...there's no agricultural mining overlay. Whereas the whole of Western are...they're actually zoned RS-1
Correct.
agriculture mining overlay. So, when the overlay comes off, which is what the annexation agreement is, once that comes off, then it's an RS-
RS-1.
RS-1 zone.
Yes.
Which is the same thing as Burning Tree and Glacier Ridge and Wood Creek. Okay. Well, you know, I think, again, it's very instructive to go out. It only takes about an hour. I'll say maybe an hour and a half, but the time you get there and you talk a little bit, I think it's very instructive to understand what's going on out there. You know, I think, you know, my experience with Randy's been pretty good. He responds...tries to respond to the residents. We have had some issues
Yep.
with noise. We've had a couple of dust, mainly spin noise issues. But I know they try to respond, and it's something that obviously we have to look at going forward.
I did knock on one woman's door at Glacier Ridge when we were putting the berm up.
Yeah.
And she had no problems with what we were doing. She was more concerned about the ATV traffic that had been running in the farm, you know? So, you guys are okay. It's those kids, you know? It's like, what are you going to do?
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just going to comment, you know? Not that it's a big issue, but I just want to say that over the last six, seven, eight years, I can hear the crushers at my house over the spring hills at times, you know? Depending on which way the wind's blowing and everything else, I mean, the atmosphere. So, I could tell when you move things or, again, when you put burms up to protect some residents that are close by, that sound deflects, and so it goes in another direction. So, just food for thought, you know, down the road. I mean, like I said, it's faint what I hear. I mean, it's not like...I hear the garbage man at 5:00 in the morning behind Wes picking up the trash a lot louder than that. So, you know, it's not a big issue. I just...that's for me. I don't know about anybody else, but it's just food for thought. When we deflect the sound, which way are we deflecting? And yeah, I probably would like to take another tour. I didn't get a chance this summer, but it would be interesting. I think my last tour was with Alan.
Alan.
So, you can see, it's been a few years. It'd be interesting to see what changes and how different it's gotten. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, Randy, what's the timeframe that we're talking about getting together? You're not here anymore, is that what I heard you say?
I'm sorry?
Did you move somewhere?
Oh, I used to live in McHenry. I live in Lake of the Hills now.
Oh, I thought you were in the state.
No, no, no.
I pictured you in Tennessee or something.
No, no.
Okay. So, we're dealing with you.
Yeah.
So, we need to get out of it some beginning of the year.
One more question by Alderman about...
You know, with all this renovation and everything else, how much of a difference in topography are we talking about when the whole project's done?
Well, most of it should be like three-to-one slopes. And again, I think the RS-1 was designed, I guess, to have one-acre lots. You'd probably put the road around the top, and then everybody would have probably walk out properties because of the slopes. You know, I mean, that would be something for creative design people, but the trains? Pretty uniform. I don't know if you've been able to look at some of the other restored properties. Do you know the El Goguen Lake subdivision and the Silverstone Lake subdivision off of Route 62?
Silverstone.
Okay. That was a former Meyer Material Mine, and we worked with Lexington Homes before we put the topsoil back down as a final dressing. They went and bought the property.
Was the Silverstone a little bit of a challenge, though, as far as drainage?
Hmm, no, because the lakes were all kind of already in the bottom of the mines, so I'm sure they maybe had to make riprap channels at certain points.
Because off of 25?
Yep.
I mean, it really dips over there, you know, quite a bit.
But there's a grade school and soccer fields in the middle of that whole subdivision, El Goguen Lakes. That was all mined out in the 80s, 90s. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with the agenda, staff reports. So, do you have anything for staff reports?
The only thing I have before we meet again, we'll have the downtown Christmas walk on November 8th, and that'll run from 12:30 to 4:30 throughout the day. There'll be shops, specials in the shops throughout downtown. There'll be the horse-drawn wagon rides, as well as the trolleys, as well as the taking city carolers. Coming that Saturday evening with our lighting of the park, there'll be some carols in the park that will happen about 4:30. Our tree lighting is usually 5:00, 5:15, depending on while we wrap some things up and get a parade involved. The following day, on the 19th of November, will be the Toys for Tots Parade organized by the J.C.'s with motorcycles from the Harley Order Group being the bulk contributors there.
Thank you. Any other staff reports?
Moving on to mayor and city council comments, I just want to thank council for each one of you coming out with me regarding the parking situation and concerns by business owners as well. The business owners came into city hall, and I had their alderman present as well to listen to their concerns or questions that they had. I think it was very educational in hearing what they have to say and what their thoughts are. I will tell you, not one of them said there's a parking problem. It's more of a parking convenience. And in front of you this evening, I put a packet together of some aerial views of areas that I would like to see us look at. And, you know, I appreciate Troy from Public Works putting this together for me in the last minute, but trying to get all this done for you for this meeting. So, from this point, you know, I think this is the first step into providing three vibrant, safe, and convenient downtown areas. It's spelled out in there on the separate downtown areas, as in Green Street, Main Street, and Riverside Drive. I will suggest Eric and I look at these items and have a discussion on November 20th at the next city council meeting regarding priorities. Let's talk about the priorities, so if you could look at that. If you have any questions, call me. I'm always available, obviously. But, you know, really go through it, and obviously, we all drove it together, so I think everyone understands the burbs that's on there. But I appreciate all you for taking the time, and I appreciate the business owners that we did meet with, which I'll make it public and known, but Michael Red Buddies, John Smith at Smith Central Garage, and also Jim Arco is from Bimbo's Restaurant. So, there's also a discussion on valet. I have talked to a local business owner to look into doing valet for us, or not for us, I shouldn't say that, for these businesses to work together to offer that. There's been discussions with District 156 to do an agreement with them that we're working on, and then also working with McHenry Villa as well. So, and also McHenry Savings Bank. So, these are all in the works. We did a lot of... We did a lot as far as council and I and staff to get this together. So on November 20, they'll be at the council for discussion and looking forward to hearing all your suggestions and priorities. Alderman.
Yeah, when we're talking about parking, possibly we could get some information as far as what East 1B has been doing because they've had a tremendous amount of nightlife that has grown over the last few years. And they have accommodated a lot of parking lots. I remember there was an old days harbor on the south side of the 72 that was torn down. And they've got parking there now. And then on the north side of, I think it's River Street or something that they tore down. So I mean, they're aware of their parking and, and again, I had it, at the direction it seems like we're going. It seems like we might wind up with that same type of nightlife in our downtown.
Yeah, and I would also say that, you know, as far as staff and some business owners, we went to Geneva, we went to Ottawa, and the same discussions are happening in those downtown areas. I mean, Ottawa's a very vibrant, there's a nice new brewery downtown, a really nice theater. So they're definitely having the same concerns or convenient parking that we're experiencing at this point, you know. And I wouldn't even say we have a parking situation now or a convenient issue right now. But I think in the near future, once the theater and some other businesses begin to thrive, I think we're going to start seeing those convenient issues. So, yeah. Any other questions from council regarding the parking? Alderman.
I was going to say, that's just why I was pushing so that we would have a good solid plan so that if A happens, we can go to B, or if C happens, we can go to D. And we're ready for it, that's all.
Perfect. Any other council comments?
Are you talking about outside of the parking?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to share that after all the other festivities on November 18, the Chamber referral group on C3, which I happen to be a part of, anyway, is having a shop with a top fundraiser. And while that's not directly impacting us, the money goes to the police charities. It does have an impact with our officers, and it would be great if everybody would support that.
What date was that?
November 18.
Alderman.
Well, maybe I missed something. When we're talking about the gravel pit, I thought we were going to follow up with an outline of the... It says a lot about the agreement review and renewal process. I don't know that we do that, other than it comes up for renewal in May. Are we going to send something out with what the process is going to be? Or would you like to do that, or explain it?
Yeah.
I've talked to Attorney Zhang. He's the attorney for the gravel pit. And we kind of preliminary talked, they've got to go to planning and zoning, and then it's going to have to go to, so they have to do a public hearing. And then they're going to have to amend their annexation agreement. So they have to go through a public process. And they're kind of, this is kind of just an overview of that. So it's going to have to, and they're so often work through their...
So that was why I was asking, Randy, you know, when you want to get going because this will take time. This will take two months just to get through the technical hearing processes. So, you know, what we probably will do is come back to the city council for your general con... We'll have to distribute the paperwork, get you the issues, and then get your comments, and then take those to the public hearing. And then, once the public hearings are all done, then it goes to you for negotiation.
Okay. And just, I just want to be clear on what steps were in the process.
We really haven't worked through that process. I didn't even know that Doug talked to Tom. So, but we've been through it before. We've done this before, and we were both involved, I think. And so it's you we need to educate on what the agreements say today and then what you're interested in them saying in the future.
And you all will be very involved with that as well?
Yeah.
You know, so just like everything else. Alderman.
Again, the, tonight's character counts presentation was very good. But again, that's something that needs to go back out to District 15, and that's got to be presented to those students, in front of those students. Having kids that exact age myself, they do not get to see that here. And it would have quite a bit of impact at the school level. And I think those character counts presentations need to not only be here, but definitely be in the schools.
Just from that, and I'm not even on the board anymore, but I know that that was, that was beginning to happen, so.
And starting when?
Well, it was already happening in the high school. So, and I know that the plaques, not only do the recipients get the plaques, but there's identical plaques that are already posted, that are displayed in the junior highs and the high schools. So, so I can't tell you that there's an actual presentation, but there is, it is announced and it is displayed.
Yeah, they need to do something like this at the schools.
Agreed.
Takes five minutes.
Yeah, and so what I, we have an ad hoc meeting coming up with District 156 and District 15, what, next week? Next week, I think. So I'll talk to them about that. I think this comes up every time we do a character counts award. So I think, I think it needs to be, especially at that age with District 15, I think it's the most important.
Since 90% of them come from the schools as nominees, it's very, you know, it's been rare to see non-school-related stuff. There has been though.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make sure I get an update for the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Alderman.
Yeah, but character counts basically started from the schools, I believe.
No.
It was a school program.
No.
It seemed like so many communities, you saw it in the...
It may have been, it may have been, but it was a coalition because I was on, I was a founding board member. So it was myself and, as Alderman, Mayor Lau.
Alder Wu.
Well.
Phrase.
Yes. Cindy Witt from the Parks Department. Originally, it was Bill Brogan who was the police chief. There was school districts. There was two representatives from District 15 and 156, a representative from the library and a representative from the fire department. So it was, it was never, and it was never intended to be a school thing. It was always intent, with the intent of being a community-wide. Let's face it, our kids are learning from us. If we're not having good character, then they're not going to pick up on it. So it was always with the intent that it was a community-wide effort.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Alderman Sandy, second.
Do you have a motion?
Can I get a second? Alderman Curry, second. Please call the roll.
Alderman Sandy?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahabharata?
Yes.
Alderman Kandam?
Yes.
Alderman Faber?
Yes.
Alderman Lytle?
Thank you, council. Thank you, Seth. Have a good evening, everyone.